Good afternoon, and welcome to our plans for water meeting on April 11. And we're going to start by saying a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and roll call. Figure one. Adam. Figure two.
Here.
Not participating. Figure four.
Here.
Figure five.
Here.
Figure three. Here. Thank you. This is a workshop, and have some questions you can ask. Or if you want clarity on information, or care about anything. If you are on line, or nine, and/or put a comment in the chat section, Jennifer will respond, for example, to your own individual question. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our general panel.
Thank you, President Hull. We customarily do a quick process check-in, and so we are still kind of in that, what are we calling it, seven, eight, nine phases? And so today's presentation should be fairly quick, I think, maybe an hour or so, depending on questions. We did have the opportunity to review this topic with the smaller stakeholder group to get some input and feedback, and to better understand where some of their concerns were. And I know many of them will be joining us today. So I think we have no process changes unless anybody has any comments related to the matrix or the process to date.
Can you just review this on special?
No, I'm not going to remember everybody off the top of my head. So we have representatives from the Contractors Association, agricultural interests from Circle, Foothills Water Network.
Chris.
Chris Schutz, representative from one of the regulatory agencies, kind of a little bit of an eclectic group, but these are folks that have more of an interest in, you know, kind of the scientific basis, you know, down in the weeds on the modeling. So this allows for them to have an opportunity to dig in a little bit deeper on the information that's presented in this format prior to us presenting it. And there's a couple of reasons why we do that. Some of the information can be a little bit difficult to digest. We want to give them a little bit more time to be able to think about it before we get to this meeting, but also just to receive their input because, you know, we, as staff, we see through a big lens. It may not be reflective of how it's being perceived by others that aren't, you know, doing it daily, or they just have a different perspective. We've found it to be very helpful. So we, our practice to date has been is to provide the information that we present in these workshop meetings, and we started this once the modeling started, to the stakeholder group. We provided it to them in writing, whatever our presentation is. We pass it out about a week prior to the stakeholder group. Then we have the stakeholder group, and then we typically have this meeting a week later. Yeah.
I appreciate that. Just giving us an opportunity to, that group, an opportunity to raise issues as we're going along. One of the things we want to avoid is having objections way after the fact. We want them raised during the process so that we can address that. And I think you would hope to help us to do that.
So thank you. And it has been very helpful for staff. They've come up with some great ideas. Some things they're still trying to work through, how to address some of their comments and implement some of their ideas, but we'll continue to work with them. So we do appreciate their effort, because it does take a lot of their time. And so it's been very kind of them to dedicate this, that time to this process.
Yes.
And I forgot to turn on my camera, the talking head. Okay. I think Director Heck has a question.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that Karen, I cannot hear you at all, and I can hear Jennifer loud and clear. So I don't know if you need to move your mic up or speak louder, but yeah, you're very quiet.
All right, how does that sound?
Hi, Ricky, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for letting me know.
Perfect. So I think we'll get going. I'm going to let Mr. Roderick do some introductions, and then, as President Hull stated, if anybody would like to ask a question, participate, we're a very loose, formal group, so jump in at any time. We welcome your questions or your input. And then, members at home, please feel free to raise your hand or use the chat. We're open to either method.
Thank you, Jennifer. So yeah, so today we're going to talk about the heck change of MS model. And we got Jeff Harris here from the West team that's going to give the presentation. This is basically the same presentation we did give that other group that Jennifer was talking about here about two weeks ago. So it's basically the same presentation that we're going to go through again. So I think, like we've done before, we'll just jump right in, let the presentation start, and ask questions as needed. So you go with that. Jeff, go ahead and...
Okay, thanks, everybody. Again, I'm Jeff Harris. I work for West Consultants, office down in Folsom, and I'm kind of overseeing, helping with the development of the model for the NID area. So what I'm going to do here is just kind of go through a general description of the rainfall runoff model that we're developing for this, that we can use going forward in this, in the study. And so we'll just kind of step through a few things. And again, kind of like Jennifer said, you know, if there's anybody around who has a question, just feel free to interrupt. And anybody out there in Zoom land, please feel free to jump in if you have a question, and we can get that taken care of. I prefer to answer the questions as they come up, as opposed to waiting until the end.
Do you want to give a little background on yourself?
So I had 36 years working with Corps of Engineers, a lot of years, and I've been at West Consultants for the past 10 years, part-time now. Actually, the last 12 years when I was at the Corps of Engineers, I worked at HEC where HMS was developed, and I was actually the lead for that division where it was developed. So, you know, when you're in management, you kind of get away a little bit from the technical side of it, but since I've been to West now the last 10 years, I've been able to get back into the fun stuff. And so, yeah, so that's kind of my background. All the years I've worked, what's that, 36, 46 years, has been all in hydrology, basically. Okay, so, next slide. So just quickly, the topics that we'll go through, just talk about the little bit of the data collection that we did to be able to get the data to build our models. We'll talk about how we're going about the calibration of the model, so we calibrate to give us confidence going forward that the model that we're developing is going to be able to predict some of the future conditions. So we'll talk about snow, which is an important factor, how that runoff is computed, and then maybe a little bit about the validation of the model. And then we'll look at just really short application of HMS. So I guess just to give a little background on the software, so the Hydrologic Engineering Center, if you're not familiar, is part of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, located over in Davis, not part of the university, it's separate, just, you know, federal government agency. So they have been in Davis since the mid-'60s and have been developing software essentially for the Corps of Engineers, but really for all the general public. All the software that's developed there is available on their webpage, anybody to download. So, you know, if you want something to do tonight, you can go there and download a piece of software and learn how to use it if you want to. So that's a little bit about HEC, a little commercial, I guess. I enjoyed my time there. So, all right, so a little bit about what the HEC, the HMS software does. So that HMS stands for Hydrologic Modeling System. So it models really the entire watershed sequence for anywhere, really. So, you know, we have the stuff that powers your model, the precipitation, basically. That's the driver for any type of runoff you're going to get. You know, if you don't have any rainfall, you're going to have a hard time getting any runoff. So HMS is able to compute the amount of precipitation that falls within the watershed, and then depending on the time of year, temperature, that can be falling as rain or snow. And so we see here, there's, it can compute snow and basically the snowwater equivalent. So you've got your snowpack out there, and how much, how many inches of water is actually sitting on the ground within that snow? So HMS will compute that. It will compute the, how much infiltration goes into the soil based on your soil type. So soil is kind of an input to the model. You take the soil and you determine, well, that soil can absorb, you know, .05 inches an hour, or whatever it might be, depending on the type of soil. Groundwater flow, so there's basically a base flow that HMS uses to compute flow that you sort of continually always have during the year. Yes?
Yeah, Jeff. So a couple of years ago, we had such dry conditions in the soil, last year, I think, that absorbed all the new rain and the snow melt.
Yes.
Can you model that?
Yes. Yeah, so that kind of goes to, you know, the conditions of what the conditions are in the basin prior to an event happening. And so there's two kinds of losses. There's what can be called an initial loss, and if your soil's really dry, then, you know, a lot of the rain can fall, and the soil's just going to suck it up because it's dry. But, you know, if before that event happens, if they've been having precipitation, the soil is going to be wetter, it's not going to be able to absorb as much water so it can runoff. So yes, it does do that, and I'll talk a little bit about that, about the time periods that we're using to calibrate our model. I guess just a little bit on that, so the models that we will be running, developing, calibrating to are actually full water years. So there's five separate water years that we're using as our base to calibrate to. And so just looking at what's on this picture here, you know, one important thing is transpiration, evaporatranspiration. So, you know, during the year, there can be water that's lost out of vegetation, goes back up to the atmosphere, that helps dry the soil out, so it's able to account for that type of soil moisture removal, I guess you can say. It'll account for when it rains, how much water can sit on the ground, surface storage, how much water can sit up in the tree canopy, it actually takes into account that. So, you know, that's different, depending on the time of year, depending on the type of forest that you have. So basically, the entire hydrologic cycle from the precipitation falling on the ground, generating the runoff, the water actually evaporating back into the atmosphere from either a water surface or out of the vegetation, all that is accounted for within the HMS software. So that is important when you are modeling an entire year of data, going from, you know, one October to 30 September of the next year. So that's kind of what HMS is set up to do. And then, so for our model, what we are doing here is we have our precipitation data, we have the temperature data, and both of those are really important for computing during the winter time, whether or not we have snow or rain falling. We've got precipitation falling as water, cold enough, it turns it into snow. And then we also input the physical characteristics of the basin, and so those will relate to how much base flow, how much water is always flowing, you know, within the groundwater, the surface. HMS doesn't actually compute groundwater, but it, there is always some water that's moving in the surface, and it always seems to come out into the rivers. And so HMS can account for that. There's different types of ways to measure that amount of base flow in a model. So HMS can compute how much excess precipitation there is. It will transform that precipitation into runoff. That runoff goes into the streams, and then it's routed down to the outlet of the basin, and it computes the, during the winter time, as I mentioned, the snowwater equivalent, so how much, how much water is actually sitting on the ground out there in the snow. I mean, like, you know, this year, there's a lot of water that's sitting up there.
Can we go back over that a second?
Sure.
I heard you said it can compute the amount that runs off in the, I would call it loss, which is what soaks in, what we, reservoirs, and that kind of thing.
Yeah, so it, actually, first what it does, it gets the precipitation, and then based on the values that are put in for losses, it removes those losses from the precipitation. And then what's left over is the excess precipitation. That excess precipitation is transformed into runoff. So that's how it comes up with the amount of water that runs off of each individual sub-basin in the model into the river or the reservoir or whatever, is grabbing up that water. Yes.
So humidity is factored in in that though transpiration?
It, well, it sort of is. I mean, you can, there, I guess it's sort of inherent in it, because you actually don't put in the humidity, but you, there's evaporation information that can be used based on different types of plants, and you can put that information in. So it's already taken into account the humidity. What you can tell it is, do you want to have evaporation during wet periods, or dry periods, or both? So it'll, you know, evaporate different amounts during, if it's wet, if it's raining, or if it's, you know, the middle of summer. Is that...
Yeah, I've just seen the soil just dry up overnight.
Yeah.
With a strong north dry wind.
Yes.
Dry wind.
Yes, so that capability, there's some more detailed capabilities in HMS that we're not actually using in these specific models. There are some really, really, really detailed loss methods that you can use in HMS, but for the type of analysis that we were doing here, that detail is not necessary, because the way that the loss is being computed in the soil, it is related to how much evaporation there is, how much evaporation is determined by the type of vegetation that is in the basin. So when it doesn't rain, the soil dries out. Now, it may not dry out as much as when you have five straight days of, you know, 20 mile an hour north winds, that's going to impact it more. So those types of fluctuations over the long period aren't as important as it would be as if you were modeling some event that might only be two weeks long, because we're looking at a full 365-day period that we're going to be using for calibrating these models. Okay?
Can I ask you to go back to the first slide? There's an overlay in that first slide that you didn't go through. I'm sorry.
Oh, this one? Okay. Whoops. Go back. Too far. There we go.
Yeah. The sub-basin dump creep.
Oh, okay, sorry. That's kind of hidden behind my Zoom picture here. So what that shows is, if we make, we have our model, we run an event, run, you know, some simulation, what this is, is a plot of the runoff hydrograph. The blue plot in the bottom part is the flow that's computed out of the basin. That brown dashed line is the base flow, so how much water is kind of flowing just under the surface and ends up coming out, and contributing to the amount of flow that is the total flow from that sub-basin. And then the top part of that graph is the precipitation. So the red precipitation is what's lost to the ground, and the blue is the excess precipitation. So you can kind of see on that graph, you know, in the beginning there, it's all the precipitation is lost, it's all red. So we don't really see any blue down in the lower part. We do see the base flow. Okay, so the base flow is going to, depending on the type of base flow that's used, it's going to, it can react to the rainfall. So basically, what this is saying is that all the rainfall is lost, and part of that is going into the base flow. And so the base flow is showing that little jump up as we get that rain. And then if we look at the next part where we see some blue, that blue is excess, and so that's what's driving that hydrograph, that's what's driving the blue hydrograph.
And he'll talk a little bit about this later, but that's the information that then gets fed into the next model, right? The reservoir operations model.
Right.
So then we know how much water's coming in that's available for us to either store or divert.
Right.
So this is getting us to the point where we can estimate how much is coming in the mountain.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, yes.
So the groundwater flow, that works just, you know, like in fractured rock as well in aquifers?
Yeah.
And in rock, I can see the flow, I know, under a ranch, I know the flow.
Right.
But how about in fractured rock, could be a little different?
Well, HMS doesn't have a detailed groundwater component to it. So it's not going to be computing how much water is actually flowing down below the ground. So this base water, base flow is just, I guess, the contribution that, you know, if you're somewhere out there, and there's always a little bit of water in the stream, even in the middle of the summertime, you know, there's always a little bit of water flowing. That's the base flow.
Our spring runs all summer long, if it's a normal...
Okay.
...20 young.
Okay, yes, yeah.
That water coming out of the ground from part of the wind in the ground.
Right, that would be the base flow. You know, I mean, ideally, there would be some connection, I guess, between the actual groundwater and, well, the water going in, the groundwater, and there are some, without trying to get into too much detail, there are some base flow methods in HMS that sort of try to do that, but they don't really do it, because the way the software is put together, it can't compute all that stuff all at the same time. It has to sort of break it into chunks and estimate different values that are actually going to come, that will actually be at the, might show up at the surface.
A little off the subject for us, but very fascinating question about, or interest in the groundwater recharging for the aquifers. Can this model tell us how much is going?
No.
It doesn't, it can't tell you how much is going.
It can't tell you how much is going into the aquifer. It can tell you how much water based on the soil that you have out there and the physical characteristics of that type of soil, how much water is going to be lost so it's no longer available to compute runoff.
Okay. So what's the data that's used to form the base flow? Is it just historic data?
It is basically, yes, historic data. So if you're going to go and calibrate a model, you can, you can look at where the start of your simulation is. So like on that chart we have here, that's April 28, 1994. So you can actually, there would be, if you have a location where you have gauge data, you can go to that gauge, and you can see what the flow is at that time, and you can adjust your base flows so that they match up. Because if you're just doing an event, and this would be an event, when the event is basically defined as a shorter period, you know, like...
Some sort of pulse.
Like, you know, two week, a two-week-long, you've got a big rain event, and you want to model that rain event, see how your model responds. You can go to that prior to the rainfall starting, see what the flow is, and then adjust your base flow parameters so they match up, and then let it compute from there. Okay. All right, any questions on this? A little bit to Doug's point there about HMS computing information to be used in our, in the Red Sim model for computing inflows to the reservoir. That, this last bullet on the lower right, DSS to HEC Red Sim, there's another piece of software that kind of is in the background called HEC DSS Data Storage System. And so when HMS does its computations, it writes everything to this DSS, and it's kind of like a database. And all the HEC software has the ability to link to that database. So we'll run HMS, it'll compute a hydrograph at a specific location. Red Sim will say, hey, I want that hydrograph at that location. It'll tell DSS, DSS will hand that hydrograph to them, to Red Sim, and it will say, okay, thanks, and run that through the reservoir. So that's the, that's how it does its connection between the different pieces of software. It's not, you don't have to, you know, do it by hand or something. It's pretty good for doing that automatically. So when we build these models, we have a different type of data that we use to help us input to the model and determining whether or not our model is reproducing what actually happened. So part of the input is, on the right side there, the gridded data. So for this model, what we are using as our drivers for the model are precipitation and temperature, basically, as the two drivers for the model to determine if, when we have precipitation, if it's falling as rain or snow. And we use gridded data to do that. So by gridded, it means that the basin model is essentially broken up into a whole bunch of grids, and they can be, they can be different sizes. They can be all the way down to like 10 square meters, or 10, yeah, 10 square meters, or all the way up to 10,000 square meters, all different sizes. So for the models that we're building here, down at the bottom, you see the, where it says data sets, Prism and Livna. So those are two different types of gridded data sets. And if you kind of think about, you know, when you watch the weather at nighttime, and there's some storm event that's going along, and they're showing how the rainfall is tracking across the region, basically, the gridded data, that is the basis essentially of the gridded data. So every time they show, every 15 minutes, there's a new set of grids developed, like every 15 minutes or every hour, there's different time periods. But basically, that is the type of data that is put in to drive these models, to give it the precipitation and the temperature information. So the two types of data sets that we're using here are the Prism and the Livna. So Prism is gridded data that's actually developed for the whole United States at Oregon State, and it is on a four-kilometer grid. So four-kilometer grid, that's about 2.8, 2.8 square, 2.8 square miles, I think, is about a four-kilometer grid. So four kilometers, four kilometers on each side. Or, I'm sorry, two kilometers, two kilometers on each side, so it's about 1.4 square miles on each side. So they, the Prism data has temperature and rainfall. And then there's the other data, which is the Livna data, and its grid size is, grid size is a little bit bigger. It's about a six-kilometer grid. And as we look forward to the data that we're going to be using for the climate, the climatological data for, you know, doing our future projections, it is, it matches up better with the Livna grid size. And so when we're doing our model, we're concentrating on using the Livna data, because it gives us a better match to the future data. So we use that on every location, every event that we, or every year, I guess, that we are modeling, we'll use the Livna data. I don't think it covers the entire period. We have to use a little bit of the Prism, but generally, Livna is the data that we are using to help us drive the model, generate our precip and temperature data for, for all the years that we are using for calibration. And then on the left-hand side, there's point local data. So there's stream flow data, reservoir data, some snow data, and there's an outline there of the Red Sim domain. And I'll, we'll have another picture of the Red Sim model domain and the HMS model domain. HMS is a little bit bigger. But that, the point precipitation data, like specifically the stream flow data, and generally that would be USGS stream flow data. And so we put our model together, we tell it, here's the gridded rainfall, here's the gridded temperature, you know, do your thing. And so it will compute years-long of data, and then at certain locations where we have this point data, we will compare what the model has computed to what actually occurred during that one-year time period. And then from that, you can make a visual judgment as to how well the model performed, and there's also some statistical criteria that can be used to determine how well it performed based on the total runoff volume, or comparing the peak, the computed peak to the observed peak. So most likely, what we're more interested in here is volume, because that's what we need for our inflows to the reservoirs. And then there's also, there's quite a few reservoirs... And then there's also, there's quite a few reservoirs, uh, within this model. And so, um, some of the larger ones, we have, uh, inflow, outflow, or we have, uh, outflow data. We have, um, elevation and storage data during the actual events. So we can use that model, we can use that data to also help us know how well the, um, our model is computing the storage within those reservoirs. If we can compute the storage correctly, we know what the outflow is. That helps us compute the area above the reservoir and help us determine if, if the amount of flow that's being computed in that area matches what actually, uh, came into the reservoir during the, during the event. So we have that, two different kinds of ways, I guess, that we can kind of, uh, validate the model that we're running, calibrate the model and say, yes, it looks like it's doing what it, what it should be doing and it's computing values that match up to what actually happened.
Talk about Prism and Livna, which is where do our data come from?
The, the Prism data comes from Oregon State. So they have, uh, they have the data they collect and then they have sort of a model that they use to build the grid data for the, the rainfall. The, they have snow water equivalent, um, they have temperature. There's several other, uh, grid information that they have developed too. But we don't need that for the model that we're doing.
And they do that for the entire country?
Yes. Uh, and then the Livna data was developed at Colorado State and you can actually download that data from NOAA, NOAA, yeah. So you can get that, that data from them. So, um, we've actually used this data on multiple different projects, you know, to help us do, build our model, calibrate our model. So it's something that we've used, uh, on several other, uh, models that we put together. So that's where it comes from.
And then you said that you validate the data with historical. So you look at, you like do a model of a past occurrence and then you compare that model result with the actual result?
That's correct, yeah. So that's how we, that's what really builds our confidence to say that, okay, yeah, this, this model is reproducing what actually occurred. So that gives us some confidence that as we go forward with these forecasted, uh, rainfall and temperature data sets, we put those in the model that it's going to be computing something that we, we think is realistic based on how our calibration results have.
That's my question about that, how close, close do you get?
Well, that, that, I mean, that's a good question, uh, you know.
So that's your, that's your, your, when you, for the model data, your confidence, your confidence.
So, I mean, uh, back in the day, I'll say, uh, we used to just plot up the, the computed hydrograph and plot up the observed hydrograph from the USGS data and say, ah, that looks pretty good. I think we're going to go with it. We can still do that, we still do that. You always put, uh, in, in your reports, you always put in the computed and the observed and just show everybody how, you know, because that kind of gives you a warm fuzzy, right? If it, if it looks good. But then there's these other statistical parameters. There's four different statistical parameters that really do a comparison of the computed and the observed in, I guess, really four different ways. And so, um, there, there's criteria as to what value you, you get when you do that statistical computation. And that tells you whether or not you have confidence in the model. I don't have a slide that shows that, but, I mean, basically in HMS, if you have information where you have, um, observed data, it'll actually generate a map for you that, that will reflect those statistics so you can see visually how well it's reproducing the actual data. So you're, you're hoping that, that map is all green. You hope that then it's not all red, because if it's all red, not good. So, yeah, that, that's basically how it's done.
And do you fine tune it then?
Yes, you do, yes, you definitely fine tune it. So if you get those statistics and you can see that your, your volume is way off, or you can look at where your, your volume is off and maybe you need to adjust the base flow or maybe you need to adjust some loss rates or something, you know, some, some of the parameters within HMS to, to fine tune it. So that, that's all the art, I guess, of calibration. Setting the, getting the parameters set up so that they reproduce something that actually occurred.
Jeff, can I add something here?
Sure.
I'm kind of the data guy, the data nerd, if you will, but, um, a couple of things. You have point data, like a rain gauge.
Do you like to go to the microphone?
Sure.
Okay, just a little clarification on the point versus gridded data. So point data would be like a rain gauge. Rain gauge is about 12 inches in diameter or eight inches in diameter. It's like 1/80 millionth of a square mile. They're trying to use that to predict what's happening in between the gauges. I, it'll tell me, it does a great job of figuring out what happened over 1/80 millionth of a square mile. Can't tell you what happened across the street very well. But we depend on that to run our models. So for years and years and years, all we have are these point measurements. Now with the two data sets that Jeff mentioned, they're capable of giving us the data everywhere in a watershed. Because that's where you figure out where the volume is. You have this complex terrain around here in the mountains, you know it rains a little bit more up, higher up in the mountains. They take care of that information and gives you a more accurate picture of what's happening in between the gauges. So you get an overall, much better estimate of the total volume of water coming into the watershed than you can get out of just the point data by itself. That's why in recent years, we've gone to these gridded products or kind of continuous data sets over an entire area as opposed to relying just on the points. We use the points to validate in many cases, but we won't, it's really, really important to capture that overall aerial volume.
Thank you for that.
Good point. Um, okay, any more questions on this slide?
We did, I did want to just interject really quick. We had one comment, um, from Beth Lawson in the chat and it's just requesting that when we share the data with the stakeholders, we share it DSS format. Does that work?
That's fine. That, that's actually, if we give anybody a model, that data comes with it.
Perfect.
The DSS data comes with it. Maybe the same thing for the Red Sim too.
Perfect.
Okay, so on, on, on this slide, the, the blue on there is the, uh, basically the irrigation districts area and it also reflects the, uh, the Red Sim model. So what's the extent of the, the Red Sim model? So that's the blue. The purplish color is the extent of the HMS model. So, all right, you're saying, why do we need a bigger HMS model than the Red Sim model? Well, the reason that we have done that is trying to get enough information, the point data information, for being able to validate the results of our model. If we just stuck with that blue area, we're really kind of lacking in points to be able to calibrate our model. So we've gone, uh, to a little bit wider area where we have more observed data because sometimes in these models, in areas where we have observed data that we can calibrate to, that helps us determine parameters and we can take those parameters from, uh, one area and use those parameters in another similar area. So it, having a bigger model like this kind of helps us with the calibration and helps us develop parameters that, that can be used in other locations of the, of the basin. If, if we'd have just went with, went with the blue, we'd have been limiting ourselves a little bit. So we want to go with the bigger, especially since, you know, we're incorporating, uh, basically two trims of the Yuba River. And so we have, one of the gauges that we have on there, we'll see on another slide, is the, the downstream gauge is the Yuba River near Marysville. So we're actually incorporating the entire runoff of the Yuba River so that we can verify, um, all, everything within the Yuba Basin, yes.
So the purple area would include the whole watershed for the Yuba River?
That's correct, yes. So it's, it's the Yuba Bear and, uh, the, the, I'm just blanking now, um, and, and Deer Creek too. Uh, so when we develop these models, so, so the, the HMS model is developed using, actually, some GIS tools. So we actually download the terrain data from USGS. In this case, it was 10-meter resolution. So basically what that means is that there's an elevation point, um, every 30 feet. So there's tools in, um, in HMS, GIS tools in HMS, that you can tell it where you want the outlet of the basin to be, what size you want the sub-basins to be, and you can press the go button and then HMS will develop the entire basin boundary and the sub-basins based on the, the size that you've given it for those, uh, individual sub-basins. So we did that using the 10-meter resolution and, and the first thing that we, we tried to go for was to kind of match up with the Huck, Huck 10 basin size, I think, is what we were originally used. We ended up having to change from that. And then after we let HMS use its GIS tools, we did a, a coordination with Western Hydrologics and we, we asked them, in your Red Sim model, what locations do you need flows? And so they, they sent us back a map or a shape file that said, this is where we need the flows. And so then within HMS, you can go back in and tell HMS, okay, we need, we need to have a flow computed at this point and this point and this point. And it will generate, it will adjust the sub-basins so that it'll give us flows at all those individual locations that we need. So the way that, that the HMS model is set up now, it will provide flows at every location that is needed by the, the Red Sim model. Uh, as, so they can, so as we go into the future for the, using the climatological data, we'll compute the runoff and that'll be written to DSS. Red Sim will read DSS and it will just take those flows and, and do the routing through those, uh, reservoirs to help with the, the water supply in the future. Okay. And the, okay, so the, I mean, snow melt is an important part of the, the water supply here because of the, you know, the, all the flow, uh, snow that's in the upper part of the Yuba and the, the Bear Basins. So the first thing that we did is we wanted to come up with parameters for the snow melt so that we knew that HMS was actually computing the, the correct snow water equivalent values. So we downloaded a whole bunch of information from, uh, Snowtail and also from, from CDEC. And we, we looked to see what stations had consistent precipitation, temperature, and snow water equivalent information. So we got, we got a ton of data. So we sort of pared it down to see where we had actual recorded data for all three of these variables, precip, temp, temperature and SWE. Some years had temperature and precipitation, but it had a computed value for the, uh, snow water equivalent. Some years had temperature and SWE and it had a computed value for the precipitation. We didn't want to use those for our calibration, so we, we picked out, uh, this five-year period, January 27th to December 2021. And we have five locations where we did snow melt calibration to come up with the parameters that we used in the snow melt part of, of our model. There are, there are a bunch of different parameters that are used and, let's see, the next picture here. So this, this actually shows the results for the, uh, Blue Canyon Station. The top, eh, the top, um, part of the graph, the top third is, uh, incremental precipitation. So this covers the full, uh, five years, January of 2017 through December of 2021. Top part is precipitation, the middle red part is the temperature, especially daily temperatures over that period. And then the bottom part is the soil, the, the snow water equivalent. So the snow water equivalent is what we want our model to reproduce because that is what's going to tell us how much water is actually sitting out there that's going to runoff. So, uh, in, in that bottom graph, the black is the observed and the blue is the computed. I mean, so we, if, we want to get our, our blue to match as close as we can to the black. And this is, is actually a pretty good representation. So we had five stations where we did this and I, I didn't just go through and pick out the best station. This, they're all, um, are good like this. And so from this, we, on our five different stations, we really had five different sets of, of snow melt temperature parameters. And so as we went to the next step to actually calibrate the entire basin, not just these five individual, individual places, we were able to take those snow melt parameters and put those in to all of our different sub-basins uh, to see how we could, if, if the computed SWE was giving us the correct runoff to match up to that point data from the, the USGS gauges. There's a couple lines on here that are kind of hard to see. There is a, in, in the middle graph, there's a, the first one, all you can kind of see is part of the word temperature, but it's a, it's PX temperature. And the, the PX temperature is a temperature that's put into the model that tells HMS when to determine if it's raining or snowing. And it's generally around 32 degrees is what the PX temperature is because that's generally the, the break between rain and snow. It can be up as high as maybe 34 degrees, be 34 degrees and still be snowing. And then the, the base temperature is, is basically a temperature that is used to determine, um, how much, how much, how many, um, what's called degree days are available to start melting the snow. So it takes the base temperature, subtracts it from the daily temperature and sees if it's making the snowpack warmer or colder and then that determines how much actually starts to melt. So that's one of the details, I guess, of, of that snow melt computation.
Jeff, could you help me understand? So you have, um, you talked about Prism and Livna.
Yes.
And that included precipitation and temperature.
That's correct.
And we have Snowtail which has precipitation, temperature and, um,
Snow water equivalent, yes.
So how, the precip and the temp are the same, or, I mean, you're using two different models, well, three different models, um, but some of the information is overlapping. So how do you, I mean, I can understand why you would want snow, snow melt equivalent, why we need that information. I'm trying to kind of marry up Prism and Livna, then Snowtail.
Okay, so the, the Snowtail data is really point data. It's, it's a point value at basically a location. So there's a, a snow station up there someplace and it has recorded temperature at that location. Uh, it's recorded precipitation at that location and it's recorded the, the, uh, snow water equivalent at that. You know, maybe there's a snow pill there so it knows the weight of the snow. Um, so we, we use that point data to do our initial calibration to come up with the, the values that we're going to be using for our snow, our snow variables that we'll be using within the, the overall model. And then in the overall model, we use that gridded data to, to, uh, have our rainfall temperature over the entire, uh, entire basin.
And that is, that's also though indicating runoff, correct? I mean, the, the Prism and the Livna data set.
They, they, they actually, they're not actually runoff, they're actually the, the input to the HMS model and then the HMS model will, takes that data and computes the runoff.
Okay.
And, and the, so it's really two different data sets that we're using for the overall one-year model that we're running. We're using the gridded data to drive it. And then when we're doing this snow melt computation here, we're just using point data right at that gauge. Kind of like what Dave was talking about, we just have data at a gauge location and we're using it to, uh, make sure that the parameters that we are initially putting in for our snow computations match up to what actually happened at these individual, um, snow stations. So does that answer your question?
Well, I'm, I'm not totally clear on how the two fit together then into an output that we would see.
So you, you will see, you're not going to see any output from what I'm showing right here. This is sort of a preliminary to help us generate input to the HMS model for results that you will see. Because we have to, we have to put in, in, in the, the snow computations in HMS, we have to put in a, a melt rate, how fast does the snow melt? So we need this information to determine how fast does the snow melt. So we put that in, we put in this base temperature, this PX temperature. Other, other input, uh, you know, how much, how much water, um, i- is there in the snowpack? how much water is there in the snowpack, different information like that. And so we do this individual calibration to come up with those parameters. And then we take those parameters, put them into our big model to compute the runoff at all our different reservoir locations. And then as we compute the runoff for all those different reservoir locations, we can adjust those snow parameters because if we put them in and we see that we're not getting the correct snow, or correct snowwater equivalent values, then we can adjust the input to that so we do get the correct snowwater for the individual years that we are running it. So it is two different types of input, but the point data is to, I guess, really help us inform our big model as to what our snow parameters will be in the big model.
Thank you.
So let's think about the HMS model as a whole. It is one model and it runs the physics of the water, the hydrology. And it basically takes it in the water cycle, from the precipitation to whatever goes into the reservoirs. And that process involves determining whether the rain falls as low or as rain. Now, once it determines that, it computes two different physics in the model. So what Jeff is addressing is the physics for the rain, where you get your excess runoff, goes directly into the reservoirs. And then the physics for the snow, so you can determine how it melts and how that water gets to the reservoir. They both, at the end of the day, come into runoff into the reservoirs. But as you know, a snowmelt reservoir comes after the precipitation, whereas rain precipitation is usually more direct and determined. So that's the difference what he's talking about, the two different components.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Marco. All right, so the years that we are using for our calibration, we've kind of divided it up into three different types of water years. So we have wet, normal, and dry. So you can see the periods that we have used there. So basically what we're doing is developing three different parameter sets, one for a wet year, one for a normal year, and one for a dry year with our three different types of water years. And so then as we go forward, we'll come up with a set of parameters that we can either use if we want to take that climate data and put it into a year that was considered wet, we can use those parameters, or a year that was considered dry, or we can also come up with one set of parameters that sort of represent all those years and put our forecasted precipitation and temperature into those and then see what that generates. So it kind of gives us a, maybe you can consider it an envelope of results based on the climate data that is forecasted.
This is a normal water year becoming a thing of the past.
I guess, yeah, yeah. I guess, I was going to say, yeah, I guess so. So the calibration, this kind of shows the, some of the individual larger basins, I guess I'll say, for the area that we're modeling. So we've got the middle and south Yuba, which are really part of the ResSim model. And then we have the north Yuba River also that we have included in the model. So we have a larger area that we're doing within HMS. So on the south Yuba, I can never remember the names of these gauges. So on the south Yuba, that gauging station there, 1141-7500, that's South Yuba River at Jones Bar. So that might give you an idea of where that location actually is that we're using for calibration. Deer Creek is the one near Smartville, so that's on that, on the picture there, it's just downstream of that blue, little blue part in the middle there. And then the north Yuba River, the pinkish area, that is north Yuba below Goodyear's Bar. And then as we get farther downstream, the downstream Yuba is the Yuba River near Marysville Gauge. And then Bear River is the Bear River near Wheatland Gauge. So those are, these are some of our main gauges that we're using for calibrating the upper portion of our model so we can get the full runoff from the basin. We have other locations upstream in the basin, just really just a few, really more reservoirs that we are using for calibration where we have actual storage and elevation and outflow data for the five water years that we're using for calibration. So this just kind of shows some of the actual point data that we're using to help calibrate, the locations of the point data that we're using to help calibrate our model. So the next thing is to complete calibration, we're working on that right now, and then the climate change analysis, and then provide the local inflows to ResSim. So, I mean, the first thing that will be happening is the calibration. Marco, I don't know, is there an update you can give on where the calibration is right now?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. So what the, I know that, go back to this, I know that what we started concentrating on was the wet water years, and so I know that we're working on those, doing the calibration of those events. So we're going to go through it, we're going to see what, how our results look, actually getting a visual of the computed versus the observed, like I was saying. And then we can do those statistical computations to see how it's actually performing over that year. And then from that, we can go forward with changing parameters to get a better match, both visually if needed and statistically if needed. And there might have been one more slide here. So next meeting, we'll be talking about the climate projections.
So one of the things, I do see we have a hand, I think it's Ricky. One of the items in why we're doing this in smaller bites is that so when we have outputs at the end from the model, it doesn't feel overwhelming because you don't have any idea of how the inputs were even generated.
Yeah, very well.
All right, we have a couple of questions. I'm going to go to, I think Ricky was actually first. Ricky, would you like to, any questions?
Yeah, thank you. If you could go back a couple of slides to where you had the wet year, normal year, dry year. Thank you. And my question is, how are those defined? Are you using the DWR? And how are you defining normal water year? I'm just interested in the definitions of these because my guess is that the quote-unquote "normal water year" in 23, I'm sorry, 2003, and the wet water year in 1996 would be defined differently now? Is that true? Or, I mean, so if you could just do a little more on that, I would really appreciate it.
Well, we looked at the wet water years, I mean, you know, that water year, 97 water year, except for the January event that happened there, I mean, that was a huge driver, lot of runoff from that. So that really kind of pushed it into a year where we had excess, I guess, runoff for that year. The rest of the year was basically dry, but that sort of pushed that year into a wet year. Some of the first things that we looked at actually were the, looking at years where we had high runoff, peak events, high runoff peak events. And then we kind of looked at the entire duration of the year. You know, you can get volume information from the USGS, how much actual volume there was during those years. That kind of helps you determine, okay, was the volume for this event, you know, in the higher third, or in the middle, or the lower part compared to other water years? So we looked at that kind of information also. So that kind of helped us, you know, break these things into different water years. We actually talked with the Western Hydrologic folks and we had some years set up, we talked with them, and they thought there was a couple of other years that might be better specifically in the dry water year type. So that's kind of basically what we looked at. Marco?
Yeah, we did look up 20 years and their definition for the water year times as a publication.
Thank you.
Did you have a follow-up question?
Well, 97, well, 97, we got more runoff quick, you know, as opposed to this year, it's, we did, I mean, we had the huge snowpack, we got some warm rains, but we did not get the type of runoff that we got in 97. I mean, 97 was a huge runoff, huge, in a shorter period of time.
Back again, that was a fairly dry year going into it, but then you had 50 inches of water, or 50 inches of rain in about 10 days up in the mountains. And it was really warm. So you had rain to the top of the mountains, so you had the entire watershed involved. This year, we actually had like something like 31 atmospheric river events statewide and concentrated in central and southern California. And most of the time, they weren't all rainfall events. They were, you know, the upper parts of the watershed were getting snow. And it stayed that way pretty much the entire year. So we never got that monster individual storm event that caused like what happened in the New Year's Storm in 1997 that was spread out the void. We certainly did get an accumulation of snow over all those 31 atmospheric river events. And we'll see more of that in the next few months.
Thank you. Has the definition of atmospheric river changed?
No.
Really?
Not really. I mean, the definition is relatively, the actual definition is relatively new.
Yeah.
We've called it, you know, Pineapple Express and a few other things historically, but the Center for Western Weather and Water Extremes, the folks down at Scripps Institute at the University of San Diego have defined, you know, a scale for atmospheric rivers, one through five, and they have specific metrics that help them define, you know, what magnitude of an atmospheric river is and then what it is in the first place. And that's actually, that whole definition process is being put into the American Meteorological Society vocabulary for weather in meteorological and climatological terms.
And we have a question from Deb. You want to unmute yourself, Deb? Deb, can you hear us? All right, well, we'll come back to your dischaimin if you want to. So do we have any more questions or input?
No questions.
Oh, Deb took her hand down. I don't think that Ricky had other questions. Ricky, do you have any other questions?
Thank you, I do not.
Perfect. And then we only, oh wait, we have one question in the chat. All right, Otis Wallen, how confident are you that this model will accommodate hot drought, the condition coined by, I had to say, rain glasses, Udall et al. in the Colorado Basin where models calibrated to historical data cannot predict the drought the basin experienced under 1-degree centigrade global warming? This phenomenon was validated by Roger Vales for the Sierra at UC Merced. Do these teams use the same modeling software? Have you interacted with them? And are there any conflicts with these modeling approaches they had developed to recalibrate evaporation, transpiration, et cetera? All right, turn that over to Marco.
Thanks, Marco.
So Dr. Vales is actually one of my experts, as you said. So I did study him. He's, basically this is related to climate change model, and we're going to be discussing climate change. And we are using systematic data, which is related there available, and those to include 3-degree return, high temperature increases. Also some of the dark conditions that are higher hot drought than they are now. So we will be presenting all that in the future. And if I may add another comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
Does that answer the question?
It does, I think you answered it perfectly.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to add a few things. The calibration is an ongoing process, and yeah, actually we need to quite a bit of it, but the results are pending. And they are going to have statistical analysis and all of that stuff. We will be presenting those here and in the public forums, and we'll be making those available in the future. So thanks for that. And I know kind of putting myself on the spot for that, but we're not really prepared to talk as much about the calibration in the future, where we have all the statistics collected. I also wanted to add about the groundwater modeling, to kind of talk about expectation. We're not doing groundwater modeling here. We do have the ICC component, as we're presenting in the past, and that component can relate to IWFM. We does do groundwater modeling if needed. I don't necessarily recommend groundwater modeling in the mountains with the fractures. There's not a lot of technology that does that. There has been some procedures developed by Fresno State University, since they deal with some of that. And there's a few like that, but they're generally comparative in nature and it's very hard to process that because you cannot identify all the fractures in the mountains, just in candidates. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was that, yeah, these models can do a lot and they can't. For example, a few years ago, we had that extreme drought that was outside of the range of statistical calibration today at the time, and that's why a lot of the models did not perform well. That's a different kind of model, that's kind of like real-time operations kind of model. And these models are not really designed to do that at this point. They can be, I mean, it would take a little bit of work to do that, and they are planning models and they are designed to capture the range of potential possibilities, which includes the, so we are going to be looking at the range, but not necessarily individual, you know, historical things, kind of looking at it as a whole. And we'll have projections that will carry the wide variety of the range of conditions that you experience here in the country.
And I think it's important to remember too, part of why we're doing the every-five-year window when we start to look back, is that we're going to do the best we can to present a model that portrays what's going on. But we're going to be looking at it on a regular basis. So if we see that in five years that the numbers really aren't starting, we can go back in and redo work in this to bring it up to speed. So, I mean, it's not a perfect model, it's not going to present everything exactly like it's going to lay out in the world, but by staying on top of it, we'll be able to make sure that we do as best as we can with the information we have available.
Yeah, I forgot to add one more item. Jeff mentioned DSS and he was referring to the HMS DSS. Actually, all the models that we have do talk DSS. And all of our data, DSS, everything from the ICC model to the climate change model, all of those are going to be having DSS, so they have a common language that the models can talk to each other, and couple, you know, a couple of people each other.
Perfect. All right, before we wrap this up, I just want to make sure we don't have any more questions from members of the public in the room or from our friends online.
I have a question, clarify on your simulation.
Could you please step to the podium?
Yeah, if you're, just a point of note, if you're not at the podium, the public can't hear you online.
There's a, on the model versus the observed, appears that particularly peaks, I guess, I'm looking, thinking about the SWE, that it looks like about a 20% delta between, you know, there are these little bubbles between the observed and the, and the, I think.
Yeah, let's go to that.
I'm just wondering, I mean, if, you know, you see those lines just tracking perfectly, then get a divergence, and I'm wondering, like you say, you want to feel warm and puffy about it, and I'm just sort of.
So like the middle one right there?
How do you get comfortable with that?
Well, actually, so when you're doing these types of calibrations, these types of things occur. So you're going to find that really none of them are going to be perfect. So what you're trying to do is come up with a set of criteria. So what you're trying to do is come up with a set of criteria that is going to give you the overall best fit. So if we did some analysis here of the volume of SUI computed versus the volume of SUI observed, we want to try to get close to matching up that value. But the, so like, select that middle one, the 2019 one. So if our, if we went in and tried to adjust our simulated to get up to that observed, it's going to impact all those other years. So if we do that, that could make us overall more wrong, I guess, you know, less correct, whatever, less correct, maybe that's a better word.
Sounds better.
Yeah, sounds better.
You're just going back and forth trying to...
Exactly, yeah. So you have to try to, I guess that's sort of the calibration thing, you have to kind of come up with the balance that's going to fit the best overall.
And that's also one of the main reasons why as we move forward, when we go into the actual modeling for supply and potential demand, is that we're going to have a range of scenarios. We're not looking for an exact answer, we're looking for kind of, what are those bookends of maximum demand, minimum demand, and additional supply needed? And I think that will help address some of these concerns that seem to pop up related to the accuracy of any one of the inputs. And I think, you know, one of the hard parts is that no type of modeling is ever exact. And so when, I think a lot of people want an answer to come out, and that's really not what this model is for, it's a planning model.
It's a decision process.
No, the decisions are really based off of a perception of risks by the board, right? Do we want to plan for Armageddon, or do we want to plan for the most ideal situation ever in the future, or is it somewhere that's realistically in the middle?
Just as an aside, on the preciseness of the fit, I get nervous when I see it too good.
Right.
Because more often than not, if you, and the way today's models are, they're imperfect. And if you twist the knobs hard enough, you can make it fit almost exactly, but it may be meaningless. When you actually put a different set of data in it, like we want to do our climate projections, they may be way off. So that's part of the arm wrestling that I mentioned here, that occurs to try to kind of get the best representation if you possibly can. With regard to, say, a little bit of difference on the peak of the snowwater equivalent that you see here, another element of that, we're also monitoring the reservoir input. So we're seeing how that gets actually converted to volume coming into the reservoir, so that's another check that we can say, okay, does this make sense or not, when you actually look at the reservoir observations and compare that to what we're simulating as input to the reservoir.
Good question. Any other, anyone else have any questions? I'm seeing no more online either. Do we have anything else we want to add? Jeff, thank you so much, I found that to be very informative.
Yeah, we went through it all.
It was awesome.
Okay, yep, you're welcome.
Anything else, Tom? All right, well, I think we're ready to turn it back over.
All right, well, we'll call it a night.
Uh-oh.
Oh, wait, I did have something to add. Were we going to add the same thing, maybe?
Maybe not.
I wanted to recognize our student Bailey, who's in the room observing tonight, Bailey Wave. Yeah, she is here learning about all things Ag, and so we had the opportunity to spend some time with Bailey this afternoon at Rich's farm, so huge thank you to Rich, he taught us a lot about organic farming, and to Antonio and Dalen?
Dalen.
Dalen, yeah, they're very nice, so it's very exciting. So welcome, Bailey, we're glad to have you here, and maybe grooming you to be a future employee, like your mom.
So what I want to add is pitch for, Nevada County has an incredible search and rescue team, and tomorrow night, North Ridge, Penn Valley, 5 to 8. If you go eat, 20% goes to Nevada County search and rescue, and Ken is part of that.
Right.
And you can't believe how good these guys are.
What's on the menu?
What have they bought?
Oh, okay.
If you're in South Platte, sir.
Uh-oh, I think I've lost all control.
If you go for their open house, and there'll be tri-tip.
Tri-tip, there you go.
Okay, with that, we will call it a night.